For the study, the Bluffton Parkway SC 170 to US 278 at the six item five. And the county council minutes Beaufort County Parkway flyover study and to further authorize the interim county administrator to execute memoranda of understanding with the Low Country Council of Government for the management of the regional studies.
And for those of you at home following along and going, what are these ladies talking about? You can view all of the agendas, packets, minutes, and more at beaufortcountysc.gov. That's where we're getting all of our information today. We do also have a number of announcements coming up. If Chloe, you want to kick off the first one?
Yeah, thank you so much for mentioning that. So yeah, any of this information is is public prior to the meetings. First announcements, Councilmember Gerald Dawson will be hosting a community meeting on Thursday, April 25th, beginning at 6:00 PM. It's going to be held at the Agnes Major Center at 21 Agnes Major Road in Seabrook slash Sheldon. It will be a meet and greet with the new Beaufort County Parks and Rec Director Eric Brown. Meeting is open to the public and registration is not required. For more information, please contact Councilmember Dawson at 843-986-7265. So if you are interested in meeting our new Parks and Rec Director, come on out. He, I know he's got some positive energy and he's got some big things in store for our Parks and Rec Department coming up.
Yeah, he has a lot of great initiatives, so I'm excited to see what Mr. Brown does for our Parks and Recreation Department. We're thrilled to have him, very lucky to have him here with us in Beaufort. I love it. So Beaufort County, speaking of public meetings, we're also going to be holding a public meeting for the Meridian Road Pathway and Middle Road Sidewalk Projects. These are two of the 14 priority locations from the 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax Referendum. That meeting's going to be held Tuesday, April 30th, starting at 5:00 PM at the Ladies Island Middle School Gym. So please come on out, see the proposed design, talk to staff members, get any of your questions answered, and learn more about our pathway projects here in Beaufort County.
That is one of the biggest things going on currently, the different pathways and projects. They're doing a lot of repairs around the county lately. And one of the other really important ones is to the pedestrian bridge and the addition of the new fishing pier on the Spanish Moss Trail at Battery Creek near the Technical College of the Low Country. So if you frequent the trail, we've been talking about this for a while, but we want to make sure that everybody knows if you frequent the trail, there are going to be some closures. So be prepared for that. You may have to take a roundabout way or go into some of the local neighborhoods to get around, but just keep a mental note of that. The bridge and the new fishing pier are located between the street crossings at Hermitsage Road and Cottage Farm Drive. The entire section between Cottage Farm Road and Hermitsage Road will be closed for the duration of this project. Construction, traffic, and staging of materials will block and interfere with the use of the bridge and the trail. Citizens should stay off of this section for their own safety. And if you want to know more about the closures, you can always look at the Spanish Moss Trails website. If you have questions, please contact Beaufort County Capital Improvements Projects at 843-255-2707.
I think that's going to be a fabulous amenity. Once it's finished, the fishing pier is going to be a huge, huge asset to everyone who utilizes the trail in that area, be it for walking, fishing, or just recreation.
Every time I'm out there, I'm always seeing people out there fishing. So it'll be great for them to have more room and more space to go in more areas, so.
Yeah. Speaking of meetings, going back to another one, there's going to be a final informational session for the transportation sales tax that's being proposed for this November's ballot. That is going to be Monday, April 29th. It's going to be at the St. Helena Branch Library, starting at 6:00. And this will be your final opportunity to hear the presentation, talk to council members, get any of your questions answered by staff, and just learn more about that potential proposed referendum before it goes to third reading in May.
And another quick reminder, the Beaufort County and Sand Tech Consulting Services are continuing to prepare for the Historic Resource Survey of Unincorporated Beaufort County on St. Helena Island. With survey fieldwork planned to begin this summer, they are currently gathering community information and developing history of the survey area to determine the location of important historic resources and sites built between 1950 and 1979. And community participation is key. The last day to fill out the project questionnaire is on Wednesday, April 24th, and you're going to want to go to tinyurl.com/bchistoryplaces. If you know absolutely anything, please do not hesitate to reach out. It will help so much with this project, and they are just asking for everybody's help.
I'm super excited to see that as well, because I've never personally seen the civil rights era studied in such detail in this area. So it's just really a great opportunity for the community to share what matters to them.
It's such a history-rich area, and the opportunity to tell stories that you know you're not going to see in history books. That's this kind of things that this is really looking to achieve, and I think it's great.
Yeah, well, it's going to help, I think, define the future history books, which is very important. I love that. For those of you just tuning in, we are getting ready to begin our Public Facilities and Safety Meeting here at Beaufort County Council, starting at 3:00 PM. We hope you will follow along, download your agenda packet, minutes, meetings, more at beaufortcountysc.gov.
And if you are watching, you are watching here on BCTV, AKA beaufortcounty.tv. We have a lot of exciting coverage coming every day, and we just covered the RBC Heritage Tournament, putting out loads of videos for that. So please go check us out on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, or wherever you get your media. And we thank them for allowing us this opportunity to do this show as well. So yeah, thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
We love it. Special shout out to our BCTV team. The Broadcasting Department works so hard to present new and exciting content for everyone to enjoy, and we appreciate you tuning in.
And we thank you, Hannah, for coming out. It's been a busy day, and we thank you for taking the time to fit this in for our amazing viewers.
Anytime.
But the meeting's about to start, so I think for now, we are going to be tuning off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you all for coming for the Public Facilities and Safety Committee, April 22nd, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A public notification, this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Sarah, could you also call a roll for me today?
Councilmember Reitz?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson? Absent. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Present.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson? Is absent. Vice Chair McGowan? Chairman Passamit?
Present.
Committee Vice Chair Bartholomew?
Present.
Committee Chair Cunningham?
Present.
You have a form.
Thank you. Can I have an approval for the agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Brown. Thank you. This will be done with no objection, and I see no objection. And we will go on to the approval of the minutes of March 25th, 2024. Have that motion as well, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tab.
I'll second it.
And Councilwoman Howard. All right. I do not have any citizen comments up here, but is there anybody else that didn't get a sign up that would like to make any statements today?
No, sir.
Awesome. We'll move on from that as well. Jump right into you, Jared, the Assistant County Administrator, report.
Good afternoon, sir.
How are you?
All right. This afternoon, I'm going to introduce you to Robert Carter. He is our Director of Mosquito Control. He's got a PowerPoint presentation to go for you. Talk about what mosquito control does and what's the upcoming season's all about. So Robert?
Thanks. Thank you for letting me speak, Council. I'm going to go through a few slides here and try to be brief in case there's some questions at the end. I don't want to take up a whole lot of time. A lot of what I'm going to talk about today focuses on our aerial operations. I'm going to add a little bit about some of the education we've been doing this week and some of the other things we do in our department. But I'm not going to give you a full rundown of the department today, just not a whole lot of time for it. But we've been increasing our activity recently. In Beaufort, the warmer it gets, you know, over the years, the longer our mosquito season is. So pretty much January to December, you can go out and find mosquitoes, which we do, just not in as gritty numbers as you find them in the summer. Different species, you'll find some species in the winter you won't find in the summer. But this is about the time that everything starts ramping up. I'm sure many of you have noticed, depending on where you live, that the mosquito numbers may have been increasing. Last week, we had our first aerial larvicide operation, and I'll go into that a little bit. It was pretty widespread because we had about four inches of rain on average over the whole county. Thankfully, this is the time when all the trees are putting on new leaves, so it soaked a lot of that water up. So what our technicians do is, following rainfall, we go out in those areas where it rained, check for mosquito larvae, check for the water, see how flooded it is, then come back a couple of days this time of year to make sure that it's not soaked up. Because we don't want to go putting out larvicide products, areas where it's already dried up, because it just wastes, we're wasting money. And larvicide products are expensive, but they are the most effective method for controlling mosquitoes. So little overview, I'm going to talk about our aerial operations, some precautions that we take making applications, and precautions the public can take if necessary, some of the surveillance we do, our other pests that we have here that we may or may not control, some of the training and outreach we've done, and our ArcGIS integration that we've worked with GIS Department on. So aerial operations, if you don't know, we have two aircraft. We have an MD-500 helicopter. We can control adult and mosquito larvae, adults and mosquito larvae from the helicopter. The airplane can only be used for adult mosquito control. So larvicide. Larvicide means, if you see this word around anywhere else, controlling the aquatic stage or larva of mosquitoes. So why do we larvicide? To control mosquito larvae before they become adults, because you get them in that one spot when they're there. You know, a couple hundred thousand mosquito larvae in one spot compared to 100,000 mosquito larvae flying a few miles. With our aircraft, with our helicopter larvicide, we can be about 100 to 150 feet, even lower or higher, just depends on obstacles and the terrain and where we need to be. 65 to 95 miles per hour. Again, a lot of this is pre-planned areas where we're spraying, where the pilot can just go back and forth if the area is large enough. A lot of it is flying over, looking for areas to larvicide that might be separated from those other areas. So they may need to slow down, they may need to speed up, it just depends. And two broadcast spreaders. So the system on our aircraft, depending on the speed you're going, it'll adjust the rate. So it always puts out the same rate that we want to, depending on, regardless of speed. So larvicide, we do it during daylight. That can be done anytime. There's no impact on non-target organisms from larvicide. After rainfall or after spring tide, that's really the main time we need to go out and check for mosquito larvae. And then one to five days after those eggs hatch, we have a really narrow window that we can control mosquito larvae, because some of this, the mosquito larvae have to eat for it to control them, and they have to absorb some of it. So once they get past a certain point before they're adults, we may have missed that window. So we have to hit it hard right after rainfall, right after a king tide. And then where do we larvicide? Large, remote areas. Where do we larvicide by air? So our technicians can do larvicide by ground, or we can use backpack larviciders. But some of those areas that are really remote, like right behind Buckwalter right there, that's probably 50 acres. I think I measured it this morning, 50 acres. And you live over there, if you've seen it on a map, that's part of a much larger swamp area. Not all of that is breeding. That's one of our drone mosaic photos. You can really see the water in there, where it is and where it isn't. So the reason we have to aerally larvicide that, obviously because it's so large, but because you see these areas, these are pictures from that area, and how flooded it can be. And then some of the other areas, that's Hunting Island when it flooded in 2020. Thankfully, that didn't produce a lot of mosquito larvae because it pretty much washed all the eggs out. But there are some other areas on there, on Hunting Island and some of the other areas in the county that flood and produce a lot of mosquitoes. One of the interesting things, if you see on the right photo, those shadows towards the bottom of the image, that's balls of mosquito larvae, is what we call them. So who knows how many mosquito larvae in there? Hundreds, a thousand. So aerally adult siding. So adult siding is controlling the adult stage of mosquitoes. We do this to prevent or reduce the spread of disease in mosquitoes and to reduce mosquito pest populations, because some, not all mosquitoes transmit diseases, but in high enough numbers, they become a real issue for everybody, for tourism, for people at the parks, everything like that. Adult siding with their airplane, we're flying at 200 feet. So that's just above treetop. 95 miles per hour in the helicopter, and 180 miles per hour in the airplane. We use ultra-low volume nozzles that put out a very small amount of product. We're spraying at dusk, because that's when mosquitoes are at their peak activity, dusk to evening. And at dusk and in the evening, non-target activity, including pollinators, is reduced or nil, pretty much. We use synthetic pyrethroids or organophosphates. Those are really the only two modes of action that public health mosquito control can use. We rotate between those, because if you keep using the same thing over and over again, your population of mosquitoes can get resistant. And the amount that we spray, 0.6 to 0.8 ounces. What we tell people, if you visualize a shot glass, or about a half a shot glass, over an entire football field, that's how much is coming out of our aircraft per acre. So it's a very small amount, and we're putting out droplets that are about 30 microns, and that's about a third the size of a human hair. So they're designed to impact mosquito, what we say, on the wing, on flight. So once one droplet hits a mosquito, it'll kill that mosquito. But larger-bodied insects aren't impacted by it, because it's such a small amount. And where we adult side is based on our surveillance, and I'll go through some of the surveillance later. Why do we need to aerally adult side? Some places, you can adult side by truck. We have both options. And here's an example of why aerally, aerial adult siding might be a better option than truck. So the picture on the left is downtown. On our trucks, the swath width that comes out is about 300 feet. And on there, you can cover downtown Beaufort with a truck and not have any issues with any mist areas. But for instance, if you're going to go to Ballpark Road, that blue line is 300-foot swath width on a truck. You can't cover anything down there. You're not controlling any mosquitoes with a truck down there. So these areas in Beaufort County that aren't tight neighborhoods, suburban and rural areas are better equipped, are better for aerally adult siding, which is why we have that option in our helicopter and airplane. So here's some pictures of what the pilot might see, excluding the one on the top right. This is just day flying for surveillance, so we're not doing mosquito control, adult siding during the day, but it gives you an idea of what the pilot might see when he's flying these missions. So the danger involved in some of this and the skill needed to be a pilot for mosquito control is very high. So you need to be on the lookout for birds and obstacles, radio towers, things like that. So the top two pictures are just the airplane. The bottom two pictures are from our larvicide mission last week in the helicopter. So precautions, everybody wonders, are the products that we use safe? And the answer is yes. Larvicide, there are no risks to humans, mammals, other animals. Larvicide is meant to control mosquito larvae. So every product we use has a label, and our mantra is the label is law. Any pest control label is the law. So the label tells you everything you need to know about that product, where you can use it, where you can't use it, when you can use it. So this, for instance, I don't know if you can read it or not, the only hazard that that particular larvicide has is you can't use it in water meant for human consumption. So we'll put that anywhere. You just can't put it in an aquifer or reservoir. So it's safe for application everywhere. That goes for pretty much every larvicide. Each one has its own individual precautions that you have to focus on. Some you can't use in certain water, and that's something we pay attention to. We have multiple types of larvicide that we can use, so that we're not impacting sources that we should not be impacting. Adult siding, we're doing mosquito control, adult mosquito control, dusk to evening. So that's when mosquitoes are most active. That's when pollinators are either not active or much less active. We keep track of all beekeeper locations if they are notifying us. So that's one important thing that people need to know. If they are a hobbyist or a commercial beekeeper, they need to let us know exactly where their hives are. We'll even have a technician come out and verify where they're at, so that we can take precautions when we're doing our applications. So some areas, we can make applications near the hives without any impact if they're far enough away. Sometimes, if they're too close to the road, if we can't make accommodations, then we will exclude that area by truck. So we do all of these things to make sure we reduce our impact on non-target insects. We have an automated notification list. Some people want to know when we're doing adult mosquito control aerial spraying, and people can sign up for that list. And when we are putting out a notification about aerial spraying in their area, they'll receive a phone call, or an email, or a text message, however they want it. And if they're inside that polygon, we call it, where they're doing an application, then they'll know about it. But if they're in California, they're not going to get a notification about it. It's just who will be, who is in that active target for that evening. And all of our adult siding products have no residual impacts. So they all break down quickly in sunlight. So we do our applications. Any vegetation that we spray it over is not going to have any impact on any insects the next morning. So it breaks down quickly. So there is no residual left, like you might find on a barrier treatment when somebody's spraying with a backpack blower. There is no liquid product left. It breaks down very quickly. Some other surveillance, so we don't just go and spray on a schedule. There is no schedule. We do applications based on our surveillance that we do throughout the county. So those are some of the locations that we do mosquito collections. That's all of our historical locations. We don't always set all of those triangular traps every week. We do trap every single week of the year. Some get rotated and some are permanent spots. We do mosquito identification to see what species they are, and then we do mosquito-borne disease testing. So the picture on the right is one of our entomology technicians putting those mosquitoes they identified into little containers, and we'll test them for West Nile virus, St. Louis encephalitis, or Eastern E. quen encephalitis. So pests, we don't control. If it's not a mosquito, we don't control it. It would be a very long list if I included everything on there. But this is, these are some of the things that people might call us about, or people might get confused with the mosquito. Right now, some of you may have noticed the fur tussock moth, caterpillar, that's the cocoon on the bottom left, and then that's the adult version on the right. We can't do anything about these. They're really only a pest. They don't impact humans unless you happen to pick one up and have a reaction to it. Other than that, we legally can't control any of these insects either. So we're only licensed to control mosquitoes. Biting midges, or nosaeans, as people call them, we can't control those, unfortunately. It's cost prohibitive, for one thing. The other is they're way too small. So you know how small they are. You feel the bite, but you can't see them. And they're active at different times for mosquitoes. So it would, no mosquito control program I have ever heard of controls nosaeans. It's just not effective. And they're not, they don't transmit diseases to humans. They are, they transmit blue tongue in sheep in some areas, but here, they're just not a risk for disease transmission. Non-biting midges and crane flies, people think crane flies are mosquito hawks. Crane flies, actually, most species don't even eat as adults. Some might drink sugar water. They eat as immature larvae, and then as adults, they reproduce and they die. So neither one of those bite humans or an impact on anything. You see them around, but they're not mosquitoes. Training and outreach, we've done a tremendous amount of training and outreach. We do a good bit every year, training. We typically go to multiple conferences every year, depending on what technicians we have that might need to go to that. One picture on the top left is from Anastasia Mosquito Control District in St. Augustine, Florida. That was their new education center that they opened. It's basically a museum for mosquito control and entomology. It's really fantastic. If I could put all the pictures on there, I would have. But it's an amazing facility they have. We were just down in their conference recently. Technicians went, our technicians and most of our staff went to the South Carolina Mosquito Control Association meeting. Some of the technicians went to the Florida Mosquito Control Association Dodge Short Courses. It's a list of about 20 classes you can sign up for to take the most advanced mosquito control classes you could ever think of. They've got everything on there. It's a fantastic, fantastic course, group of courses that people from all over the world go to take, and they have it in Gainesville. We're actually in the middle of a grant participation with Anastasia Mosquito Control District in St. Augustine, with the National Association of County and City Health Officials. And we got $15,000 to partner with them to do some training. So one of those pictures is of us doing some insecticide resistance testing at their facility, so that we can bring that knowledge back to us and do it better. We also did some educational outreach. The little kids in the yellow shirts, they have a little amphitheater in their education center, and they bring schools in and do educational outreach and show them around the education center and talk about mosquitoes and everything like that. We also hosted some representatives from the CDC last year to come down and do a study in our area and some along the coast for insecticide resistance following hurricanes and some of the mosquito species that aren't represented in the current database. So CDC came down, we collected mosquitoes for them, they did some testing, took them back to Fort Collins and waiting on the results for that. Every year, we go to the, every two years, we go to the airshow at the Marine Corps Air Base, and we bring both of our aircraft. Last year, we brought both of our aircraft and pulled out all the stops. We brought live mosquitoes, we brought mosquito larvae, we had some swag, we had a table, everything set up, so that we can have all those people come through and not just talk about the aircraft, but talk about what else we do in our department, how all of our aircraft help with those activities. And we participated in the Junior Service League Touch and Truck. That was really positive. And also, there's two pictures of C-130s there. That was at one of the Florida Mosquito Control Association fly-ins, where they had their, the Air Force reserves had their C-130 that they sprue with, and they put on a demonstration in that middle picture, and that's just water coming out of it, but that's always fantastic. All right. So last thing, ArcGIS integration. This has been a major undertaking for the GIS Department, and hopefully they don't look back at it and think that they use too many resources in mosquito control. I'm not sure how elaborate other departments' ArcGIS databases are, but I know that we constantly are having discussions with GIS. They've done an amazing job at putting together a program. We're still working on it. It's more impressive than I ever could have imagined, aside from the non-working link that we just found that about. But this is just three snapshots of the multiple maps we have on there. It's been wonderful, and I'm so glad that the county still puts so many resources towards the GIS Department, because it's beneficial to every single department. And that's about it. Any questions? And that's about it. Any questions? I know I covered a lot.
I have one question.
Sure.
So I know I've been receiving emails and everything about if they're going to be spraying for mosquitoes. And one of them, I did get something about the caterpillar, so that's good to know. You said people could sign up to get notifications. Where can they do that at?
Right now, they can't sign up themselves. They can send a message or call, but we are going to work on that. Cause it's, so it's a, it's a reverse 911. I actually think that council has the same, it's Rave Mobile. Does anybody know if they? That's okay. Similar. It's a, it's a per-call cost. So we just have to make sure that we can afford to have people just sign up themselves. So, um, but currently if they want to be notified, they can call us or they can send a, a citizen gram, something like that, and we can get their information and put them on the notification list. Hopefully we will put a link on there in the future so that people can just sign up if they'd like to.
Do have a question. I tried to look at the, the planned spray missions and it says I need to log into.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just found out about that this afternoon. It's always worked for me, but I never cleared the cookies on my browser. And so it, I didn't know, we didn't know it was broken. So they're going to work on that now and make sure that it starts working again, which I'm glad. I'm glad that, that, that people outside are actually looking at it to figure it out. This is good.
The BCMC app? Can you go over that a little bit?
I don't even know. I guess we still, I'm not sure if we even still use that, honestly. There is an app. Tell you the truth, I guess it's still, I honestly don't know what it's still connected to. But we do have an app, a BCMC Beaufort County Mosquito Control App where you can go and put in. That's a very good point because our current service request, so since we switched all the way to ArcGIS, there's that service request integration that might've been there is not connected to that app anymore probably. That's something we need to look at, look into and, and check on. I'll look into that and get back to you if you'd like.
Should be a BC Connect.
Right. Well, we, we did have our own app at one point.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but.
I think we're integrating those.
Yeah, you're right. It's still there, but I don't think it, if you go on to, if you want to send a, send something in, you can see it works. But I, I believe that was the, a couple of years ago, they were trying to get rid of the individual ones and go to Beaufort Connect. But we also, now not to, we do have our own service request form on our website that the public can put in service request form. It has a lot more information on it. And that's, I'm going to work with Beaufort Connect and see if we can integrate the two together so there's not multiple ones. But there's lots of information we like to collect prior to going out and doing service requests. So we make sure people know what things we can't do, what, what they can expect from a service request, that kind of thing. So we like to collect as much information, but also give the public as much information so they know ahead of time what to expect when they see a technician or see aircraft, see trucks, things like that.
Thanks. Awesome.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
In Jasper County, do you know, do they spray by air and by truck as well?
They don't spray by air, by, by truck. They don't have a dedicated mosquito control department. They do have some spray trucks, trucks with ULV machines on it. I haven't spoken, haven't been in contact with Jasper County in a few years, but that was the case previously. But they, but they don't, I know they don't have aerial, any aerial capability.
I ask because part of my, part of Sun City is Jasper County and they're always asking us, when is Beaufort going to spray? Okay, we're not because you're Jasper County.
Right.
I knew they had trucks, not aerial. I didn't know about aerial. Okay.
Something tells me with all the new houses, they got the revenue to get that plane. Just throwing that out there.
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe we can talk about, I can talk to you all about that later.
There we go. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. We will move on to our agenda items. We do have quite a few, so we will get through these. Number eight is a presentation on the updated status of Broad River Fishing Pier.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Committee. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Bill Barnum. He's with McSweeney Engineers to give you the deep details of this. But just to re-acclimate everybody, because it's been a little while since we last spoke about this. So we've talked about Broad River Fishing Pier quite a few times. The last time was most recently a couple of years ago in 2021 or 2022. And the intent there was, we had done a synopsis and the storyline was that the bridge is failing and eventually needs to be removed or replaced, removed and replaced. So at the time, we had hired McSweeney to do just some initial conceptual planning. And they did that process and came up with about six or seven different options. Various options as far as removing, replacing, repairing, removing part of it. And what was decided upon at that time by committee and council was to do option, I forget what it was called, F, I believe, at the time. But it was basically to remove the existing pier, which is about 1,800 feet long, and replace it with a brand new pier of about 900 feet long. At that time, we had some general cost estimates. I believe it was around $8 million. There was no funding attached to the decision that was made by council, just that that's what we'd like to explore and move down. So today, even for God, a mosquito up there is flying around.
It's a fly.
Okay.
Nice big fat fly.
Yeah, I saw it. It was noticeable. So anyways, it was about $8 million at the time was the general cost estimate with the option that was selected. No funding was attached with that decision, just that we'd like to explore that. So there was an ANH tax award to do Phase Two, which is, or Phase One, which is the preliminary design and further cost estimating on the options. So that's what he's going to talk about. But before I invite Bill up to talk, I want to kind of set the scene a little bit further. Like I said, two years ago, we came back and said, the bridge has cancer and it is looming. There is an imminent decision that has to be made by council at some point. Just to remove the bridge, and this was the previous number, was a million dollars. So we're, we have to do that at some point. This year, we're coming back with an update of that story two years later. And the way we measure, and Bill will explain this more. The way we measure the health of the bridge or the lack of health of the bridge is how much concrete we scrape off per our yearly inspection. So it continues to deteriorate and is in worse condition. So no longer does it just have cancer, but the bridge is going home with hospice. So we are very imminent where a decision has to be made in the near term for what we intend to do. And again, there is, up to this date, there's been no cost associated with any decisions. And that will be something that has to be discussed further and implemented into our CIP very soon. So not to be morbid, that was my, my wife's, or my fifth grade daughter's vocabulary word last week was morbid. So not to be morbid about the situation, but it is a, a very pertinent situation and it, it has a real serious consequence that we all have to consider. So without any further, Bill, if you can come up and give us a further description. And as Bill's coming up, this is being worked through our engineering offices. It's got passed down a couple of times. So in tandem with Bill at the end will be Brian Bauer from our engineering department.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Here to talk about Broad River Fishing Pier. Doing well, doing well. So I have been, I guess you could say I've been the engineer of record on the Broad River Fishing Pier for the last, for the last 10 years or so. Our involvement originally started in 2014 or 2015 when Beaufort County put out an RFP for, I'm sorry.
A little closer to the mic.
Sorry. Uh, our, our involvement started around 2015 when Beaufort County released an RFP for rehabbing the structure. So I'll go into, to our history over the last 10 years, talk about the structure, what we've done to it and some of our recommendations and moving forward. So originally, it was the old SC DOT 170 Bridge. In this, in the same location that the current 170 Bridge is over there on Shell Point. It was originally built in 1957 and then Beaufort County took ownership of it in the early 2000s. And 1,820 feet of it approximately has been converted into a fishing pier. So in 2014, there were, Beaufort County issued a design build RFP. And at that time, the intent was we were going to rehab the longest fishing pier in the East Coast. Okay, that was, that was the intent of that project. We started looking at it and just said, that is an undoable request. The deterioration was just too far gone at that point. And so we did an extensive amount of analysis on, on the structure. Multiple inspections, concrete testing, core samples, load rating analysis and, and the like. And at the end of the day, we decided jointly with, with Beaufort County Engineering is that we were really going to look at a structural preservation plan. What we were trying to do at that point was just to try to kind of stop the hemorrhaging and preserve as much of the structural capacity that we still had to try to eke a little bit more life out of it. So that, that went on from 2015 to 2017 where we really evaluated a lot of, a lot of different repair scenarios. And then in, in 2018, we started implementing some of those repairs. And the, the problem, the, the main underlying problem with this structure is, is number one, the beams that support the, the superstructure. And secondarily are the, the piling. The piling are just not long enough to, to go into the channel bottom. And decades of scour has, has eaten away the channel bottom at the bridge. So in 2018, we implemented repairs to both the piling underwater and to the beams above water. Again, just to try to preserve the capacity that we had remaining in the structure. Since 2018 rolled around, we have been doing interim inspections every year. We've been doing interim safety inspections, both above water and underwater every year since 2015. In 2021 is when Beaufort County issued the design, or the design and permitting of a new Broad River Fishing Pier solicitation, of which the McSweeney Engineers team was successful. And so we started to look at, at Phase One of that, of that project, which was, okay, what is feasible to actually put back in this place? Well, at the same time, we did a couple more years of, of annual inspections. And really at the 2023 inspection, that was the first time I had really seen the 2018 repair work that we had did. I was really starting to see deterioration with some of those repairs. And at that point, that's when I said, okay, I, I really need to go back to Beaufort County and, and impress upon everybody the importance of, we have to make a decision at this point because there, there's no sense spending any more money on, on a repair scheme and, and it's deteriorating. So what you see in the background of that picture, that is actually an I-beam. That is, there is no I, horizontal I-piece on the bottom of that beam anymore. So all of the reinforcing steel is, is completely gone. And then that big pile of concrete, Jared is exactly right. This is, this is the, the only, the only structure I've inspected in, in my 24-year career where I actually kind of gauged the, the rate of deterioration by how much concrete is on the barge at the end of the day, after my, my inspection. Not exactly a standard method of, of structural inspection and analysis, but it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good gauge year after year, what I'm seeing going on with this thing. So at the end of 2023, that's when I reached back out to Beaufort County and I said, look, let's, we, we need to either, you know, we need to either move forward with Phase Two or figure out what, what else we're going to do. So I'll talk about the, the solicitation in, in 2021, the feasibility study in the Phase One and Phase Two repair plan. So that was the, the RFP 081321E. It's a multi-discipline team that we put together to evaluate what, what can be done at the site. What feasibly could, could be put back in there? What we found out, well, I'll get to what we found out. I'll tell you what our, our goals were in the, in the whole thing was. First, can we keep the pier open? That was, that was one of the things we were looking at. Can we continue to keep the pier open while we're doing this repair and permitting scheme for, for a new structure? The answer was yes, as long as we continue to monitor the structure and close it down if we need to. Second goal is design and permit a new pier, add value to Beaufort County and then environmental stewardship. So those were some of the goals that we went into the, the feasibility study with. And the Phase One was the schematic design phase. That was completed in 2022. And I'll talk a little bit about what we found in Phase One and what we have recommended as far as to, to move forward with in Phase Two. So in, in Phase One, we got all of the preliminary data that we would need to build a new fishing pier. The geotechnical information, the bathymetric data, the hydrographic survey, all the right-of-way information. Collected all that. And then we came up with several different potential alignments of, of a new pier and evaluated several different materials and looked at the different cost ramifications and looked at the different permitting ramifications of each one. What you see in the background are just, are four of the potential alignments that we looked at for a new fishing pier at the site. A couple of things that's important to note about the Broad River and, and this location specifically that make this, make this site quite a challenge. Any, any fishing pier, any structure that is going to be put in the Broad River and, and this environment to be able to stand up to the environmental conditions out there has to be constructed very similar to a DOT bridge. It has to be on that same kind of order of magnitude of scale to be able to resist the earthquake forces, the depth of water, the wind, the waves and the earthquake and all the other code compliance stuff that you have to do. So that any structure that is, is going to go back out there would have to be necessarily massive in terms of what most people would consider a recreational fishing pier. In other words, it would be somewhat akin to what you see on the coast would, would be what would be required to be put back there. The other thing that we found is, the good news is it doesn't have to be 900 feet long. It has to be at least 600 feet long. That's another, another challenge at this particular site is there is a 600-foot-long mud flat between land and where you could actually do any real type of fishing from a fishing pier at any tide. And so what you see in front of you is the design option that we recommended to the, to the county at the end of the day. And so what that is, is a 600-foot-long pier that is accessed by 100-foot-long ADA compliant ramp and then a, a tee head that would be, that could be fished off of. In addition to that, our thought was on dealing with the existing fishing pier was twofold. One was to take all the piling and convert that into a fishing reef at the site to try to save on as much of the demolition cost as we could. So all the piling, everything that's been in the water, we're going to try to leave it in the water. All of the beams, all of the concrete that is above water are, concept is to bring a concrete crusher, a machine on site and literally recycle all that concrete to be used on site to improve that, that parking lot, that parking area. I don't know if you guys have been down there in a while, but it is, is pretty rutted out and it gets pretty flooded. And so what, what we had thought is let's try to repurpose, to the extent possible, the, the materials that, that we have on site. In addition to that, we had looked at doing some, some other onsite amenities, a, a small picnic shelter, improved parking and, and improved drainage. So this was the option that we had, had presented to, to Beaufort County. It comes with a, with a pretty, pretty steep price tag. It's, it's hard to see the information that's, that's up there on the screen. We looked at, a, a couple of the scenarios that we looked at for the new pier were designing one with a vehicular load and designing one with a pedestrian load. It, it turns out that the cost is very similar because it turns out the vehicular load really doesn't control the design of the fishing pier. It's the environmental conditions that I just, just spoke about. So both of those carry a price tag of around $12 million. To rebuild the same size and scope of what we have out there now is about $35 million projected. And the demolition, we're projecting around $3 million for the demolition of the, of the structure. So all very, very high numbers for consideration. I think other than, so the, the remaining items in Phase Two, essentially Phase One was just a feasibility study. Is it feasible? Yes. It's, the answer is it's totally feasible. It's got to be a larvicide. It's got to be a large structure to, to last for, for any length of time. And if, if we're going to move forward, then the next phase is to go ahead and, and start permitting the, the, the new pier and the demolition of the, of the old pier, finalize the, the design.
Yes, sir. Question, and tell me if I'm flat out wrong, but is there any way to tie into the existing active bridge for the replacement, basically using part of that superstructure that's already out there or is that just way off base or not feasible?
To, to the existing DOT bridge?
Yeah, that, the active bridge out there now.
Well, we wouldn't be able to tie into that for any recreational.
Okay, so you couldn't use anything?
Purposes. No, and, and, and just based on the, on the different height, I, I don't see where we would, where we would gain anything. One of the other objectives that we were trying to do as well with the, some of the alignments that I showed you, was actually moving our structure outside of the DOT right-of-way. Because currently we're, we're still in, your structure, which is their old structure, is, is still in there right-of-way, so.
I just know I like fishing with the pilings.
Sure. Well, and, and it's, it's a great, I've, I've spent, I've spent hours and hundreds of hours underwater there. There's a ton of fish there, which was one of my reasons for wanting to, to do the artificial reef, because it's a great, it's a great resource. It really is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember when I first came on council, the engineer said that, you know, it's going to be pay me now or pay me later on this. And we've done the Band-Aid now for all these years. I don't mean Band-Aid, but we, we've tried to do the best we could. And now it's time if we want to be, your explanation was excellent and it shows us that if we want to have a pier there, we've got to get rid of the old one. And I, I like the idea of, of course, reusing the materials for the reef and, and for the parking lot and whatever else we can do. It is heavily used, I think, and a lot of people, it's very public access. If you can't find some of the other piers in Beaufort County, you can find this one pretty easily, I think, because of where it's at. But it's a lot of money and, you know, of course, that would have to be part of the consideration, but I would like to see us go to the next stage because getting permits will take time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anybody else have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
So if we don't come up with $13 million roughly, what happens? You just close this pier period or you demolish it anyway so that it's not accessible? What do you do with it?
Well, I, I think it would be a massive liability to, to leave it if it was to be closed because some of this is, is anecdotal, but it, it's, it's my understanding, talking to people who did, were doing the demolition on the old DOT bridge, is that when they started to pull the superstructure off of this thing, it actually, some of the piles started to fall over because there's so, such shallow embedment out there. And if it's going to be closed, then in my professional opinion, it needs to be completely removed because it would be a massive liability, unfortunately.
And I'll add, we're not to that point yet, but we're going to keep doing the annual inspections. McSweeney had a five-year contract for inspections that ended last year, so we're trying to work through the best path forward. But we're going to continue those annual inspections just to monitor the deterioration, how everything's working. But if it gets to the point, and that's the recommendation, we would move forward. But yeah, just kind of keep doing the inspections annually.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Glover.
Quickly, what, what, what do you, what is your estimation on the life expectancy now of that old pier?
Yes, sir. That's a $13 million question. I will tell you, we, I, I get asked that a lot with concrete, concrete structures and it's really, really hard to, to pinpoint that. I, I don't, I don't think we've got five years before I, 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 I feel like there's a lot of burden on my shoulders keeping this, this thing open. I mean, in a, in a very professional but very realistic way. And at, and at some point, we're just going to have to, to make the call. And when that is, it's, I, I wish I knew, but I think we're, we're certainly in the single digits.
I'll help you with that, Bill. We were talking about this before, before last week, we were in the office talk, we were talking a year or two. So he's not going to sit here and stamp that, but us talking around the table, that's the discussion. And so to answer your question, Ms. Tavernet, is at some point, we will have to put a, can't access this. And the question is, are we going to be prepared and ready to move into the next stage? Or we have another plan? Or what's, what's the next stage? Do we have another project? Are we going to invest $12 million here, somewhere else? All the above. The next thing that we don't have answered yet, and this isn't a request for today, but something that definitely take opinions from today, is for, to continue the design and permitting of the next phase if we were to replace, that is currently not under contract. So we will have to come back to that and there will be a couple hundred thousand dollar design fee for that. So that'll be the first question. Do you still have opportunity between then and when it's permitted to whether you want to move forward or not? But that's the next.
Jared, if I may.
Go ahead, I want to follow up on.
Go ahead.
The, the design for the new pier is going to be side by side? Is that what we're looking at?
It, it would be off to the side. Yeah, so continued towards the, the ramp in that direction.
And, and you, you're talking about 60, 600 feet versus 900 and?
Yeah, the existence is 1800 and the one that's proposed is 600 and change.
And, and I ain't going to lose, going to be able to still catch fish from that 600?
Yeah, you said, what's the depth there?
So, so our, our go, we're, we're all fishermen when we designed it and we've, we've been working on this pier a long time and have spoken to a lot of fishermen out there. Once you get to 600 feet, it, there's a nice little drop-off and it gets you out to 35 feet mean low water. So at, at that pierhead, you got 35 feet of water at low tide that, that you can, that you can fish in for that 200-foot, both sides of the pier, 200 feet. So it'd be 400 linear feet of fishing pier at the, at the end on, on the pierhead.
And that is a very popular pier for, for a lot of outsiders coming to Beaufort. I didn't realize that, but a lot of tourists fish there and stuff. So I'm like, Mrs. Howard, I want to support moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jared, I think I can make it a little simpler for you if it sounds, but everyone's kind of on the same page. We got to get it done. So I guess a couple of questions that I have is, one, how long are we looking at to build? Once we start, let's say we got approvals, we got designs done. What is our timeframe for start to finish on completion? And then for, I guess, the back of our house, where can we start finding ways or locations for the funds for this? I mean, we're going to have to come up with somewhere, my guess is close to 14 to 15 million.
Well, I'll answer the first, the funding section. So the, the initial funding that we've expended so far on the yearly inspections and the phase one, those were both out of ANH tax. So for the phase two, if there's consideration for the design and permitting, that would be a good source that we would have to work through. I know that's all getting rebranded right now, but we'd have to work through that as a source, but the actual 10 or 12 million dollars or 15 million dollars? I don't have that answer, but we can get back to you. And then the timing on the project and how long?
Then I think, you know, a lot of that's going to be dictated by permitting, which Bill had preliminary conversations with all the permitting agencies and the conceptual design. And preliminary, no one had issues with it, so there was no major obstacles that popped up. But hopefully, you know, as long as permitting doesn't drag out, I would think two to three years for design, permitting and construction.
And then can this new pier be built while the existing one is there and us demolish it afterwards? Or is this something that needs to be done?
It's all dependent upon the health, so we would monitor yearly.
Right, let's say, I'm saying if it lasted or whatever, but I'm, but I'm saying, can we start building the new one while the existing one is still there, if it is functional?
I, I think as long as we did monitoring of the existing one while they were doing, especially the construction of any piles or drill shaft, whatever the design was, as long as we're doing the proper monitoring, vibration monitoring and things of the existing pier to make sure that it wasn't having a detrimental effect and causing things to speed up, I think, yeah, you could probably build them at the same time.
And they're, they're offset alignment, so they're not.
Yeah. So I would say the next step is then, let's start pulling together so we actually have an action item to take, whether that is starting the, get under contract for design. And then I guess the rest of us up here, we need to start figuring out if ATAX money can be used for it or that's TAB specialty. So, but if there's, or grants that we can put out for it and let's see if there's different ways we can get this ball rolling, because I'd hate to see it down before the new one's even done, so.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way to document usage with, I know you've done it on the Spanish Moss Trail where we have the counters, because especially if we use the ATAX money or other monies like that, it would be good. We all perceive that it's used a lot and, but it would be nice to document it too.
Yeah, I'll have to check, but I think there may be a camera out there possibly that we could probably look at usage or, um, counters.
Like doing a sample.
And I think there may be, I have to go back and check the boat landing master plan. There may be a snippet in there about some of that use, so we can take a look. But yeah, I mean, we can help develop the story of how much is used or not used.
Okay, right.
Do you think this is something that's possible to get to us by the next meeting for lease for the contract?
It depends. We've got to work with procurement to see where we are with the existing contract, if that's something that we can move forward with procurement's blessing. With the existing, existing team, great. If not, and we'd have to go back out and put it out as a advertisement. So we can get you that answer and, and then if it is something that we can extend the contract, then we'll be able to work through that faster.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you tell us how much the current contract is? Did I miss it?
I don't think we mentioned it, but I would.
Well, it's 247,000, I believe.
A year?
It's, no, no, ma'am.
For, for the inspections?
The final design and permitting fee was, I believe, 247.
Well, so we got a couple of different contracts. So existing for the five-year contract for annual, once inspection per year was about, y'all remember?
It was about 30,000.
30,000 per year. And then the existing phase one contract, we just heard in the completion, this is completing that, was, what was this?
I think it was about 115, somewhere around there.
I think, yes.
And then the estimated cost is about 250 for the phase two design.
So we're looking somewhere between, well, it was 12th and three, so it's 15. So somewhere between 17 to 18 million with the contingency is what we're going to need?
That's probably a good placeholder.
Yeah, okay.
But so for next year, we need the money for phase two.
That's correct.
And inspections.
And, and we'll have to update our inspections. So our inspections have just lapsed. Are we at our last year last year? So we would need to continue another five-year contract for yearly inspection.
And it sounds like we would need a five-year if it's going to take that many years for permits and then building. We're probably looking at four to five years before this thing's open if we started now.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, that gives us direction.
That gives us a little bit of direction. I mean, no, no action taken today, but at least it gives us some direction of the way we would like to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, while we're doing all this, can you also look at federal grants to see if there's anything out there? Yeah, we've been looking at federal grants for this and others. And with, you know, the recent infrastructure law that came out, there's opened up a lot more grant money. So I think there may be some possibilities to look at once we get a little bit further along in the process. There def, may definitely be some possibilities and maybe even possibly working with the bases to see if there's some sort of partnership since, you know, there's military members that use it as well, so.
That'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it, y'all. All right, like I said, there's no action on that, so we will move on to number five, though. Recommend approval to council of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of multiple parcels of real property from Beaufort County to South Carolina Department of Transportation in connection with SC 802 Sam's Point Road, right turn lane. Jared, that is you as well for a couple of these, this one right here?
This one and a few others, I think, then we'll skip to John in the airport in a second. So this is SC 802. So this is part of our 2018 sales tax. And this is the right turn lane there at Walgreens. And per our IGA with SC DOT, whenever we work on a transportation project within the program, we acquire the properties, the right-of-way that's needed in Beaufort County's name. At the end of the project, we take a one, one transfer, one plat and one deed and transfer all the properties that we collected at one time to DOT for their eventual long-term ownership and maintenance of the right-of-way. So that's exactly what this is. This is the three properties you can see labeled up there and their appropriate acreages. And so those have been finalized from the, from the county's perspective. This is the final plat that we would be, with the deed included, that we would be transferring there, zero dollars transfer between the county and, and DOT, but it, it provides them the long-term maintenance of this project.
So it is just the right-of-way and it is no fiscal impact to us at the county? This was already purchased in 2018?
That's correct. But it does require ordinance because it's a transferred property.
Do I have a motion, please?
A second.
First by Ms. Bartholomew and second by Mr. Glover. Any objection?
Have no objection. Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
You, you, you doing it as, as they come in? Because I know that from the east side by the Harris Teeter, I guess you're going to be deeding that over to the state as well?
Yeah, we'll do that at the end of that project. So we call this a project by itself, a standalone project, and since it's concluded and all the works completed, that's the reason for us transferring.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
This will move forward, no objection. And I see no objection. On to number 10, recommend approval to council and ordinance authorizing interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of a portion of real property, abiding in Hilton Head Airport located on Summit Drive, TMS number RF10005000271A four zeros. We got to figure out a way to shorten that up, I'll tell you. Thank you, John, how are you, buddy?
Good afternoon. We just call that the exec airpiece is quicker. You probably see in the backup, what this basically is, is a, a small solid for a property that effectively became airport property years ago when we moved the taxway over because we've got infrastructure in that property. And the, the movement line, which means people can't go farther than a certain line without contract, contacting the tower for permission, is prohibits folks from accessing that property. So it's effectively ours now. We're just going through the, the formalities of acquiring that and that's what this is.
So are we purchasing it and then getting reimbursed by the grant?
We've got a grant from the state that covers this, so we're fully funded.
Perfect. Do I have a recommendation?
So moved.
In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bartholomew with the second, thank you. Any discussion?
I have one question, please. This is, it was strange to me that the account balance is 53, 455, 64 on this one and also item 12. But the one digit is different. You have two accounts with the exact same amount of money? That's weird.
I'd have to look and see if that's a.
Because otherwise you can't do both of these. It will exceed the amount in the account.
I don't think that's the same one because, like I said, the one is a fully funded stake rate.
Well, when we get to 12, it's.
There, there is an account number on there. The account numbers are different.
Yeah, it's by one digit, but it's strange that it's the exact same amount of money in the account.
One's 54, one's 53.
53, 455.
And one's 54, 455.
That's still weird.
It could be a strange question. I'd be happy to look into that for you, but it's, we're getting down towards the end of the fiscal year, so the numbers are all kind of coming in towards home plate there for us.
All right, do we have any objection on that?
No.
This will move forward, no objection. On to number 11, recommend approval to council of resolution authorizing interim county administrator to enter in a non-tenant commercial operating agreement between Beaufort County and MLL Mobile Detailing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. In a second. This is actually, we have somebody that's detailing the planes and when they are on our property detailing the planes, they're actually paying us $75 to use, I guess, our square foot adjuried utilities.
Oh, that's what it says?
So. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, how much revenue do you think this will generate?
It's hard to predict, but everybody gets their planes cleaned, so we might as well get paid for it. I mean, we've, we've already had several folks use this contractor and it's, you know, people do like to keep their.
I don't have a problem. I just wonder how much money we, you know, we, we always have the, the revenue for the airport here on Ladies Island. I was just wondering how much money.
We could look at it next year. Let's get it approved and then let it roll for a fiscal year and see what that revenue looks like. But at the end of the day, it's revenue positive.
Okay. All righty, can this be done with no objection? And I see no objection. All right, number 12, recommend approval to council to award a contract to Talbert Brighton Ellington for professional airport planning services. All right, John, I will let you talk about this one if you could, though.
Okay, the FAA requires that every five years. Okay, the FAA requires that every five years airports re-offer, re-advertise the planning, environmental, and then separately engineering and construction phase services for airports. So that's, this is the planning and environmental portion of that. And we put this out in February, it came due in March. We had a team review the, we had three responses to the RFQ. And you can see on my tally sheet there, the Talbert Brighton Ellington was kind of the overwhelming favorite. They are our incumbent consultant group. They've done a lot of, a lot of work and there's a lot of work kind of underway with them. But this is to follow with the FAA requirements.
Awesome.
And a question.
Yes, ma'am, can we get a motion first?
So moved.
So moved, in a second?
I'll second.
Bartholomew, second, yes, Ms. Howard.
Where are they based out of, where are they based out of?
The planners we work with are in the Columbia office and then the headquarters we work with in Charlotte.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Can we just move forward with no objection? And again, I see no objection. We will move on to number thirteen, recommend approval to council of resolution authorizing interim county administrator to purchase, or to pursue condemnation for portions of parcels. All right, I'll do it. R one two zero 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 three zero 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 six zero nine zero 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 and R one two zero zero three zero 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 six eight two zero 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 associated with the right-of-way acquisition for a pathway located on Depot Road as part of the two thousand and eighteen one cent referendum. Hi Jared, welcome back.
I agree, as, as painful it is to read all those numbers, it's painful to listen to all those numbers be read, so. I don't know how you fix that, but I'll like it if we can come up with a solution. So what this is, this is Depot Road, the pathway along Depot Road. We have a project planned from Reba Road back to the Spanish Moss Trail as part of the two thousand and eighteen cent sales tax. With the thought and eventual hopeful is that it continues beyond the sales tax program from that point to downtown Beaufort. So we have been working on the design and we've got approval to move into the right-of-way acquisition. We're down to our last two properties, which we have exhausted all opportunities, both written and verbal communication, and have not been successful in reaching agreement. So the two tracks, track number twenty and track number twenty-nine, these are at the two ends. Twenty is there on the left of the screen and twenty-nine is on the right of the screen. Twenty is at the Reba end as we're approaching Reba Road. And in essence, we've been unable to, to reach an agreement. That property has a multifamily unit on it and the owner is requesting a written guarantee from the county to subdivide that property. That parcel is in the city of Beaufort and we have no jurisdiction or authority to grant that written guarantee. So without that written guarantee, they're not wishing to move forward and thus the reason for us bringing this to you guys today. On the other end is track twenty-nine. And again, we have worked with tirelessly with this owner to try to reach a negotiable term. They have concerns where they want some power from Dominion rerouted interior to their site, separate from the project, which is beyond the project scope, as well as some planned driveway construction. They want assurances that they'll be able to cross the, the pathway with some of their deliveries, which is not an, not an issue. They just want some guarantees that are something that we can't guarantee as part of the project. As well as some relocation of the fencing and plants that we're willing to work through. But again, we're not able to reach terms on what that figure would be for those items. So again, these two properties are part of, of this project. And with any transportation projects, you can see this is track number twenty and twenty-nine, there's several tracks involved. All the rest of them, we have worked out negotiated terms with and are moving forward. And these are the last two to move this project to the next phase.
Chairman, I have a motion that we.
I'll second it.
Approve the condemnation, I don't generally like to condemn property, but I think you, what you've said is that there's really no real issue with the road itself or the pathway. There's some personal issues that we, we, we just don't negotiate that kind of detail and stuff. So I don't see any problem, everybody else has moved forward. I think the pathway is leading here to downtown Beaufort eventually. I think that's just another start toward that, that end and stuff, so, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Second, Ms. Howard, thank you. Anybody else for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I want to follow up on is the people that own these properties will get the proper amount of money for them regardless of we condemn or not.
That's correct, so as part of negotiate or part of condemnation goes, you have to put the funding up in an escrow account while the case is settled and then whatever the settlement agreement out of that condemnation suit. So they will get paid some fee we've offered in our value and they have not agreed. And then now the courts will determine the value.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with Mr. Glover on this, this is one of those things, I am not a fan of condemnation at all. I think I voted no every single time so far, to be honest. So we, we have exhausted all options, though.
Yeah, so, so we have obviously our right-of-way agent internal, Patty Wilson. We have our right-of-way attorney, our right-of-way consultant and then a condemnation attorney, all on the team that are working through the issues on this project and any other project that we're working on. So they have exhausted the resources available and this is.
I'd like to say too that in the communication, the property owners know that we're moving toward this action.
They are well aware of it already.
Yes.
Do we need a roll call? Sarah, could you call it just to be safe? Thank you.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Committee Vice Chair Bartholomew?
Yes.
Committee Chair Cunningham?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, we'll move on to number fourteen then. Recommend approval to council of resolution to accept the USDA com, wow, composting and food and waste reduction program grant in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars for a county pilot compost program. Do I have a motion?
I'd be glad to.
In a second by Mr. Bartholomew, thank you. All right, this is, can you go over the breakdown of this for me, Jared?
Yes, and I'll.
Match on it and what it actually costs us when it's all done.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll invite Victoria Hoffman, our solid waste manager, to come brief this and just kudos to her. She and her staff and Katie Herrera, Assistant Manager Environmental, were a key in, one, seeking out this grant application and two, applying for this. So this is a great step forward. And I'm happy also that we're finally turning this kind of morbid meeting into something a little bit more positive, so I get to use it twice.
Here to bring the joy. So we're really excited to bring this forward to you. Composting is something that, I've come and spoken to this committee before with their backyard composting. We've initiated this compost idea to residents. Whenever we told the public through Facebook that they could get a free compost bin, we were overwhelmed and we had to shut it down and gather our senses about us. And then whenever we did initiate, our recycling coordinator presented a talk to residents and we had a full house, standing room only. So it's definitely something that residents are excited to see and bring. Composting your food waste and other organic material meets EPA diversion rate goals as well as South Carolina DHEC goals. And it also is in part of our solid waste and recycling goals is to create a program to divert this material. You had a question, I believe, what it would cost the county.
Yeah, I saw that, there's a couple of matches in there, so.
Yeah, yeah, it is a, it is a matching grant fund. So we get the two hundred and seventy-three, but in a nutshell, I can't find my notes at the amount. But it is around sixty-five thousand dollars that we'd be matching them. And part of those funds will be going towards a robust education outreach program. And within the grant, we requested that our on-call consultant, HDR, assist us in creating the compost pilot program. So we have a really great team on our hands, not only from Beaufort County, but HDR as well, who have wealth of knowledge and actually assisted us in obtaining this grant. So part of our program and the pilot that we initiated to USDA when we requested these funds was to create an education and outreach program. That would entail having a friend for our well-known and loved rerun mascot. So we would create a composting mascot to couple that, to be able to educate kids in the schools and also at our community outreach events. And that would also include speaking to residents, both, all age levels, from school to adults, to get a really well-rounded information out to the public. Because if you build it, they will come, but only if they know about it. So that's part of the reason that we're wanting that large education program. And then another task we have is to formalize partnerships. It's great, it's funny, whenever you get this money, people kind of come out the woodworks. So we've already had people contacting us like, hey, we want to bring this business to Beaufort County. So not only is we finding people who want to compost, but it's also bringing business opportunities to Beaufort and Jasper Counties. People who want to come and help us with this. And then after we formalized the partnerships, obviously we need a place to compost it, so we're looking into that. We have a couple of different options, there's a compost facility just outside of Beaufort County. And then there are also option of having an in-vessel system. Charleston County composts already, I'm sure you're aware of East Ferry, but they have a residential drop-off program that's really successful. They actually just opened several more locations. And then also Katie and I were just touring New Hanover County and the beautiful state of North Carolina. And they have an in-vessel system that they collect residential food waste. They were able to start schools composting and now they're getting businesses on board as well. So then, once we get everything settled and there's a place to take the compost, we'll start outfitting the centers and creating the infrastructure. And it's simple, it's basically a dumpster container, it'll contain a lock, so people can't put things in there that can't be composted. So that's where the training comes in. Once you receive the training, you get the combination of lock, you're in the club, you get to help us save the planet, right? And then of course, we'll be working with local farmers to ensure that the compost that we are creating not only is going to be used for public works and part of the Beaufort County facilities, but also these local farmers and agricultural producers.
Yeah. I'd just like to make a comment, this is very appropriate for Earth Day.
It is Earth Day!
They have figured out a way to make the worms work for us, so thank you very much.
So I just guess I have one more question, so it looks like it's sixty-eight thousand, four hundred. The first fifty thousand we're putting into the budget this year. Then the remaining eighteen, four hundred would be the year after, it looks like, in twenty-six. So is this a, something that's going to be added to your budget for the future?
Yes, so the idea with this is for those funds to be able to afford the vendor who goes and collects the compost from the convenience centers. So the idea is to start at the centers where people will be able to drop off their food waste. And then that hauler, just as we have people come and collect recycling and our MSW, that hauler would collect the compost material, so it would go into our budget and it would be a revolving item in our.
That's what I was thinking, I just wanted to make sure that everyone up here was, we're all on the same page, like it, it's a program for the future that's going to be continued to add to your budget from now on.
Yes, it will be.
This is the startup cost, but then it'll be added into the budget, so it's something we expect to probably continue to grow as well if it's successful.
Yeah, absolutely, it will be a cost, but there's also a chance for waste diversion. And so everything, everything we take to the land will cost us money. It costs us money to haul it and it costs us money to tip it. And there's about eighteen percent of what we think is yard waste as well as food waste. And food waste is actually a bit harder to calculate because we really don't know how much people are discarding.
Right.
So we do a waste audit study, but there is a potential for cost savings whenever we're diverting the waste.
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I really see this as an investment for the future.
Better, Jim.
Yeah, with, with the return coming to the county for the byproduct, that's what I see. And, and you're right, farmers could use that and gardeners could use that compost eventually for their production, so, and it'll pay for it.
Absolutely, compost is a really great product. You have, you can use less chemicals on your crops and then it is a circular solution to some, several problems. So we're really excited and eager to get it started and there is going to be some startup costs, but it's initiative that we really want to take charge of.
Investment.
It is an investment into the future, for sure. It's important, in my opinion, to bring this to Beaufort County. And if we were able to get an in-vessel composting system similar to New Hanover County, it would be not only the first in Beaufort County, but also the first in the state of South Carolina. So we would be paving the way to a greener future.
How many of those slogans did you write down before you came in here?
I got them all in my head.
You don't have to convince us, I think we're all on board, I was just curious on that aspect of it. Sarah, did I already get a motion on that, I'm sorry, I forgot. I did, awesome, can this be done with no objection? All right, this will be done with no objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number fifteen, recommend approval to council to award a contract to JH Heirs Construction for RFP number zero three two one two four, dirt road paving contract number fifty-five in the amount of two million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Jared, you want to brief on that for a second? This is, I think we talked about four, possibly five roads?
It's three, possibly four.
Three, possibly four, thank you.
Yeah, so this is our yearly construction contract for our design and construction contract for dirt road paving. So in two thousand and nineteen, we established our five-year paving plan. And then we made a quick amendment in two thousand and twenty-one, we had some roads on the Fusky that was in two years. We updated those, so we paved all those, rocked all those, excuse me, last year. So this is the fifth year out of that five-year paving plan. What this does call for, we have already established our next five-year paving plans, so six, year six through ten. And this calls for the opportunity to get started on the design of one of the next year's road projects. Not the construction, just the design element is all that would be included. So we had, we put this out in March, we had two bids. JH Heirs has done a lot of dirt road paving contracts for us in the past and they were the low bid at two point five million dollars. And in general, we have a lot of unknowns in this for various reasons, some, some earthwork reasons and some permitting reasons. So we carry a fifteen percent contingency on these projects of a total of about three hundred and eighty-five thousand. All in all, bringing us to a total cost of two point nine, two million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand. And this is, this would be funded out of our tag fund. So our tag fund, we've talked about before, is our, our ten dollar, twenty dollar fee that we pay when we renew our licenses. We use it primarily for dirt road paving. And so currently it has a funding account before this expenditure of three point six million dollars.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Glover, in a second?
Second.
Mr. Reitz, any objection?
I don't have any objection, but I do like the way, I just said to Jared that you included Federica Lane in there.
Yeah, so Mr. Glover's brother serves on the CTC and he's been on there for about five years or so. And since he got on there, he wanted James D. Washington, I know, for a fact. But I think he snuck in Frederica Taylor also. Anyhow, so those two roads have been on his list and that was his sole purpose for joining CTC. So even though we're not using CTC funding, we're using tag funding, we're glad we're able to finally get to these roads.
Thank you.
Do we have any objection? This will move forward with no objection then. Thank you, Jared. All right, our final one before executive session, we have recommend approval to council for request to purchase a TEK eighty-four, TEK, eighty-four body scanner for the detention center. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Can we just go ahead and pull that up on the screen so people can see it and know we had some?
Do we not have one now, a scanner there at all, no?
Yep.
So this brings us into the new world, okay.
So one of the questions after, well, first, does anybody else have any questions, conversations?
The conversation I hear was, this looked like it may resolve some issues that we have.
Correct. Do you want to do a little presentation on it real quick and see if it, uh?
Well, if you'd like. The material is also on your backup, this is a really state-of-the-art device. This is used through, throughout South Carolina and some larger prisons and local jails as well. It's approved by the South Carolina Department of Corrections, SDC. We have current space that's used in our fingerprinting room, right? We have current space that's used in our fingerprinting room right now that would be repurposed to house this space. This will be a really great tool that can be used for every potential inmate that comes through the Sallyport into the detention center. It has the ability to identify foreign body objects on a potential inmate that a corrections officer could potentially miss.
Yes, I only have one question. Is, this will obviously eliminate searching. So will an inmate or a person that has to go into this be given the option to do a search or use the scanner?
So to say eliminate is not necessarily true.
Okay.
So this can be used precursor stage that may or may not require the strip search that would normally happen that go as inmates come through. But there's a very detailed, specific policy for the intake of an inmate. So this is another tool that could be used versus that, or could be used in conjunction with that. So it's...
Would there be an opt-out policy put in place by the detention center where, I don't think many people would opt for the other option, but should they not want to be exposed to x-ray, would they be able to do the more traditional route?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, there is. I don't want to speak too much about the policy because it's very detailed, and I don't want to say anything wrong. But the policy would be written specifically for our detention center and then approved through the SEDC.
Okay. Do we need a roll call on this? Can this be done with no objection? All right. And I see no objection. This will move on. Our final item, we'll be moving into executive session if I have a motion for item number 17 pursuant to SE Code Section 30-4-78-2, to engage discussions and negotiations incident to propose contractual agreements. Do I have a motion?
So will, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second.
Any objection to go into executive session? And we will move into executive session.